Hey y'all, I'm so excited to introduce in this episode, a conversation I had with Elise Nicole Kirkpatrick. And I wanted to just share how excited I am for you guys to hear this conversation that we had, revolving around energy and the way our mind works and how all of that comes into play when we dance, especially country dancing for us in this, in this area. And oh my gosh, you are going to be so blessed by this, by this podcast, by this knowledge that she shares in this conversation that we have. So I'm so excited for you to listen. I want to share with you a little bit about Elise before we jump into the podcast. So Elise Nicole Kirkpatrick is an internationally praised feminine authenticity and embodiment mentor, who is wildly passionate about supporting women and men in reclaiming and restoring their relationship to their magnetism. She is a certified yoga instructor, a sound alchemist, a meditation and mindset coach with an emphasis on neuro-linguistic programming and gut-brain connection. She's an herbalist, a motivational leader, and so much more. Elise and her man hold the Colorado Country Swing state championship title, and her love of dance has been a catalyst for deep healing and growth, not only for herself personally in her expression in the world, but also in the way that she coaches. Her bestselling workshop, Embody Your Desires, which she gives us a window into inside this episode, has been transformational for many. Elise is devoted to illuminating the path so others can embody a radical renaissance of their true essence and live their most alive, pleasure-filled, and abundant life. So this guest, Elise Nicole Kirkpatrick, I'm so thrilled for you guys to get a little glimpse into our conversation. Check it out. All right. Well, welcome, Elise. You are the first, like officially intentional, Elise, the first of 2024 interview on this podcast. So thank you for joining.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I'm excited. So something that the listeners are going to start to become more and more aware of as we talk about it more is the idea of a dance and wellness retreat, which we'll talk a little bit more later. But I'm actually really excited to talk to you because I know that you have a healing journey that involves dance, as well as some other, some other aspects. And would just love to hear a little bit of your story. So how did you get started in dance? And maybe why did you get started in dance?
Yeah, so I actually am from South Texas originally. So I grew up right down the street from Green Hall, which is like one of the world's oldest country dance halls. And you know, I grew up dancing on my stepdad's boots, which I know a lot of little girls have done. And so I think I basically knew like the two-step, right? And, and I have spent a lot of time in dance halls growing up, but I never really knew how to dance. I really just kind of like was thrown around on the floor, thinking I knew what I was doing. And then four years ago, I exited a relationship that I thought this person was the one, and my heart was absolutely torn. And I was also at the same time struggling with anxiety and panic attacks. And one of the biggest triggers that was inducing those was being in really crowded, really loud places with a lot of lights and dance, dance halls or crowded places like that was like the last place that you were gonna find me. However, one night I had a really close friend who was over and I just looked at her and I said, I feel like I need to break up this funk and I need to go dancing. And she was like, okay, so we looked up on our phones, like all the places in Colorado Springs to go dance. And we're, we're finding all these like bars and, you know, booty popping places. And I was like, maybe not like that. So she's like, how about we go to a country bar? And I was like, awesome. Like I love country music. I ride horses. I'm definitely a cowgirl. And so I was like, yes, that's great. Let's go. So we found this place, the Whiskey Baron, which happened to be like eight minutes away and we went down. And yeah, I was out there. She took me around on the floor like a couple of times, leading me. And I was like, this is gonna be healing for me. I can tell just being out here, letting loose. Like I got to dress up all cute and listening to good music. And when we were walking in, I remember telling her like, there's a possibility we could get in here and I could need to turn around and leave because it's gonna be too much on my nervous system. And it actually was like the complete opposite. It was like a God thing. I was like, okay, I'm supposed to be here. So that turned into pretty much three nights a week, going out, dancing there and one other place here in the Springs. And I just like dove head in and found anybody who would dance with me, even though I was like stumbling on myself and had no idea what I was doing. And when someone put me into like my first dip, which was like the princess dip.
Oh, yes.
I was like, oh my gosh, he like arm barred and went into it. And I was like up off my feet and my head was hanging down. And I was like, I feel so liberated. So I just kept dancing. I ended up in the next like year and a half, I found a dance partner who was from Arizona, who just like knew all the things. We were practicing outside of the dance hall. And I absolutely fell in love with dance. And it's to the point where I started like taking myself to the dance halls. I was like not even worried about feeling anxious. I loved the lights. I loved talking to people. And all the while, this totally helped me heal my heartbreak. And I found myself really expressing myself more and having more confidence and feeling excited to talk to more people and learn new things. And you know, I at the time was, let's see, I'm 38 now. So four years ago, right? I was like not some young spring chicken out there on the dance floor, right? And yeah, it just completely changed my life. I ended up meeting my forever partner at the dance hall dancing. And then we went on to win the state championship together. So in four years, I went from like literally not knowing anything about how to move my feet, no dance background, nothing, to completely liberating my feminine essence, my confidence, my authenticity, meeting new people and just literally radiating from this place of yeah, absolute confidence through dance. So that's kind of my story.
That was such a great story. I feel like you covered so much in so little time. That's amazing. Oh my gosh. Okay. So you said when you first walked in or that first night, you already felt like something that this was going to be a healing, a healing opportunity and a space and a healing space for you. And you mentioned a little bit about like the freedom that you felt, but can you elaborate anymore on what it was that you felt internally and how did that, we'll start there?
Okay. So yeah, I think that I'll never forget going out on the dance floor the first time. And this was during the whole pandemic situation. And so, you know, I just felt like when I got there, I was like, wow, there's people still like, it was like this underground feeling of people still getting together, almost like a Footloose vibe, right? Like they found the place to come together. And I just remember, you know, when you go into a place where you're familiar with the music, it's like the music takes you away. So I was so immersed in the song and singing the songs and letting my girlfriend, you know, I didn't know. I was like, just normally I would, you know, just let someone take me and I don't know what I'm doing. But I was like, can you kind of teach me? So I know what I'm doing. And she was like, yep. So she talked to me through it. And I think that the, the biggest piece for me really was like, I closed my eyes so that I could feel what I was doing versus trying to logically make it make sense in my head. And for me, being someone who's, you know, I've been a single mom for almost 11 years and I've always had to be in control. And it was really this place where I got to completely let go. And that was the feeling that I was like, I have to have more of this. Like I don't have to be the mentor. I don't have to be the coach. I don't have to be the mom. I don't have to be in control here. I can just let go and let myself be spun around and moved to the music. And it has nothing to do with anything external. It's everything about how it made me feel on the inside.
Oh my gosh, that's amazing. And I can really resonate with what you're saying about not like on the dance floor, not having to be in control, especially when we're partner dancing. So kind of a little bit of a bridge or segue, you talked about being like in your body. You, you, you said you closed your eyes and you just allowed yourself to feel it. So what have you found to be a, maybe a consistent exchange between like you're the femininity, the power of the femininity and also that like masculinity and how this is kind of giving you freedom to be in your feminine more? Is that, would that be accurate?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and you know, this is actually something that really shifted how I show up in my business as well. I mean, it literally changed my life, everything about my life. Because you know, I have a background of being a yoga instructor. And although you would think that that's a very feminine kind of job, it's actually a lot of structure because you're leading others and you're controlling kind of the class, the sequencing and all of that. So when I first started dancing, I was not, you know, I was an embodiment mentor, but it wasn't like in the feminine aspect because I was really teaching people how to launch a business. And you know, I have a mentorship called Soulpreneur where I help entrepreneurs to bring the soul into their business. But that can be very masculine. And so when I started to feel that, okay, this is really where I get to be in that. Even though I'm like radiant and energetic, it's like that softer feminine, I was like scouring stores to find cute skirts that would spin. And you know, I got excited to, to put myself together, but then also go and be led and not have to think about what I'm doing, but have that surrender, which is very feminine, right? The adaptability is feminine and that surrender, that flow, that openness, that's all feminine aspect. And for someone who for so long, you know, I have, I was active duty military. And for so long, I felt like I had to protect myself to feel safe. And with dance, it gave me permission to feel safe, not having to have that protective armor on all the time. Because as a follow, I'm not very good at leading. I'll just say that now. As a follow, you really have to trust and be receptive to cues and be open and be adaptable to, you know, if your lead kind of gives you a cue and then halfway through changes their mind, you're like, oh, okay. Now we're going this way. And that's all the feminine essence. And so I learned so much through that, not only from my own expression, but also to be able to take that and now use that in my coaching practice to help other women to feel into their feminine expression and have the balance really of the masculine and feminine.
Wow, that's really incredible. So you said that it's also trickled into the way you do business. Can you tell me more about that?
Yeah. So what I hear is I can take what I'm doing from dance and see how that can play a part, but just in a different way in my clients' lives, right? And so if I see a client who's constantly trying to control things or is like not being open to flow, I like to, to bring it back to, okay, this is like if you were dancing with life, right? And if you were in, in dance with life and you can say whomever you like, but if God's kind of your lead, so to speak, right? Are you allowing yourself to be led? Because if not, then you're just pushing against how God wants to lead you, right? How spirit wants you to flow through life with your business, with your relationships, with whatever, you know, that, that comes to you. So I'm able to see that now and, and really say, okay, well, I've been through this and I know what it looks like to push back and like not get ahead or not move forward or not open up to a possibility that's available for us by pushing back. So what happens if I just let life lead me the way that I'm led on the dance floor? I mean, that's how I feel beautiful and radiant and open and in the flow on the dance floor. So why would it be any different in life? And with my clients, it's like the moment I tell them something like that, they're like, oh my gosh, you're right. I'm not letting myself be led. Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Could you give like an example of what it looks like in your life to be led and to surrender to that leading? Would you be willing to share an example?
Yeah, I'll actually give one that is quite vulnerable, actually. This, so at the winter convention is where Tyler and I won state for Colorado Country Swing Partner. And that was actually the beginning of a wild year for me, health-wise. I had a rib, nobody really knows this, but during that competition, I had two ribs that were dislocated. And it was extremely painful. And I was working with a chiropractor and I finally decided to do spinal decompression to help my ribs go back into place. But what happened during that was I had a wild systemic response in my body to the spinal decompression. This doesn't happen for everybody, but it just so happened to happen to me. And I ended up getting really sick. I gained a whole lot of weight. I got shingles three times on my face in the span of about four months. Yeah. And I pretty much like completely lost myself. And my, I let go of my business. I went from having, you know, multiple five-figure months in my business to like zero, because I just had to let go of everything because I didn't know what to do. And we were still going out and dancing every once in a while, but I just like did not feel like myself. I used to tell Tyler all the time, I feel like I have concrete feet on the dance floor. Like I'm not dancing the way I want to be dancing. I just feel like I have to completely like let go of all of this. And I feel personally that that's what God was really asking me to do was let go of a complete identity that I had attached myself to over the past, you know, 15, 20 years so that I could reestablish my identity and, and really turn my eyes upon what's most important for me. And I think that, you know, when I relate that to dancing, it's like, if you've ever watched somebody or been a follow or been a lead and like the follow is backleading all the time, it gets, you can see it, first of all, I'm guilty of it, right? You can see it, but also you can feel it. And it just feels like it'll be one of those dances where you're like, oh man, that was not fun. Because there's not good communication. There's not good flow. Because the person who's following is literally trying to control everything. And the way that we end up dancing beautifully and having flow is when your follow can be a good follow and like maybe throw in some styling that's really fun, right? But like slowing it down, creating spaciousness to listen, to feel, to see, and to understand what cues you're being led, right? So that's what I had to do in life was like, okay, here's how I think it should go. Because this is how my life has been, but now I have all of these things that have come up for me that are not the norm for me. So what can I do but slow down, create spaciousness, listen to the cues I'm being given? And in that spaciousness, I can hear God's voice for my life, just how in the spaciousness on the dance floor, you can hear your lead's cues.
Oh my gosh, that's really profound. That's really amazing. I am being so like touched and inspired by you right now, Elise. And I wanna, so kind of something that the listeners may or may not know is that I was one of the judges at the convention where you did take state championship. And I, my experience, because I remember your, I remember you dancing, you, you and Tyler dancing. And my experience was like, whoa, where did this come from? It felt like you guys were so connected and in sync and communicating on like a much deeper level than a lot of the other competitors. And it was like, I remember experiencing your dance, like Tyler was really holding space for you to be able to express yourself through the lead, you know, and the movement that he was even initiating. And it's like he would initiate and you would, and, and then you would respond and he would hold space for that response. And it was a really beautiful thing. And I just remember thinking, have they, wait, when? Because I mean, you didn't always dance with Tyler, right? Okay, Tyler competed 20 something times. And I don't know how many of those were with you, but this one definitely felt so different. And at that time, I don't know if I would have even been able to fully articulate what I'm saying right now, but I know what I felt in those moments and you guys did a really phenomenal job. So kind of a crazy, like full circle moment to be talking to you in this space. As I've been learning a lot more about embodiment and embodying these different energies and all that. So I'm so excited for you and thank you so much for being willing to share.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for that reflection because, you know, and that, it's funny, we actually did not want to compete. And last minute, the day of, we were like, it's the state championship. And we were like, let's just go like in our sweats. And I wore the like convention t-shirt, I think he did too, and tennis shoes, which is not how I like, I like to dress up. Your girl likes to look good when she goes out, right? And I was like, let's just go to be a part of our community and like represent Colorado, you know? And you're absolutely right. I think that's something that I've really learned in our relationship too. I mean, dance is like the center point of Tyler and I's relationship, right? But we've learned so much about communication and showing up for one another. And even if we weren't in intimate partnership, I've learned so much about communication, period, being a dancer, that it's just so beautiful to see how people on the other side see that, like your perspective of that as a judge, you know, and watching us dance.
Yeah, that's actually one of the things that I look for. Like I'm looking, I would call it chemistry and then connection. But like all in all, that's really what it boils down to is like a communication with each other. So how would you, uh, could you share more about how learning and practicing that communication through, in and through dance has been like directly reflected and, and implemented into your, your real life relationship?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I think that it's, there's a couple of rules that we have, right? In our relationship. And I think that this is probably like, we could go on a whole other tangent of a podcast episode with like having a relationship and being in the dance community because it is tricky. You know, you're, you really have to let go of, as a woman, we have to let go of the sisterhood wounding of, you know, our man dancing with a whole bunch of other women. And there's some songs that you can definitely make look really sexy. There's a lot of moves, right? That you can, you know, do that, that you sometimes are like, wait, that's my move. Like, hold on, you don't get to do that with anybody else anymore, whatever, like that. And so I know like in the beginning of our relationship, we really had to openly communicate like, hey, here's our rules. Like first dance is always with each other, last dance is always with each other. Here's the songs that are our songs. Other than that, I want you to have fun. I want you to be out there. Like maybe don't be doing like this move and this move because those are a little too sexy. But like, you know, we love to support each other in the, the opportunity to go and have fun dancing. And it, you know, is a slow kind of, um, a slow kind of communication all the time versus like a lot of big talks or communication about what works. And then, you know, that is a really great reflection in life of like, if you are in an intimate relationship or a friendship or a relationship with family, you know, those relations require constant tiny little communication to, to move forward and to have growth together. And it's just the same way as if we're trying to learn a combo or learn a new move. You know, we have to be like, oh, that felt good for me. That didn't feel good for me. Like, oh, I don't know that. I don't know if I can hold that weight that way. Or, you know, what if you do this, this way? And then you keep trying until all of a sudden bam, you have this beautiful combo that now everybody else wants to know, right? And it's like same thing in relationship is like, the only way that we got to that smoothness in that combo is because we spent the time to talk about all the little details of it and try it and experience it, which is what you do in a relationship, you know? You may have communication about something and then you say, okay, we thought this would work, but turns out it didn't. Let's try it this way instead. And I think that, yeah, that has been, you know, without me even realizing it, I think that that's been a really beautiful thing as far as learning communicative kind of pathways to learn each other better, which is, you know, that's what makes good chemistry and dance is knowing one another.
Awesome. Um, I just wanna acknowledge you for being so beautifully articulate.
Thank you.
I really love listening to you and listening to the way that you explain things. So can I ask, like, what advice would you give to a new couple who is maybe just entering the dance scene as like a way to connect with each other? What advice would you give them in that space?
Hmm, this is a good question. I would say if both dancers are new and you're wanting to connect on the dance floor more or wherever you're dancing, maybe your dance floor is in your kitchen. Like Tyler and I love to dance in the kitchen. It's our favorite place, right? But, um, I think that the most important thing when it comes to connection in dance is make, making a playlist of songs that move both of you and have meaning. And then pay attention and be observant of your partner and how they move, not just physically, but how do they respond emotionally to things? How do they respond logically to things? How do they respond to, you know, if, if I'm thinking about Tyler, okay, if I can look at how he moves on the dance floor to protect me from running into someone else or, you know, how he responds to specific songs, then I can be an energetic match for him. So, and then being really open to my own communication of like, this feels good, this doesn't feel good. That helps him to be an energetic match to me, not only on the dance floor, but also in life too. So.
Feel like we have a hi Tyler.
He has a big smile on his face.
Can you tell me a little more about making the playlist? Like what?
Yes, absolutely. So we have a playlist that Tyler actually started when he just started to have feelings for me. And I was like, not interested in dating. He was so sweet. He just was my best friend for a long time until I gave in. But, um, yeah, he made this playlist and it's just our names together on Spotify. And he just put every song that reminded him of me and our friendship and how he felt about me. And then every time I find a song, whether it's new or I'm like, oh yeah, there's this old song, like I love this song. And then every time I find a song, whether it's new or I'm like, oh yeah, there's this old song, like I love this song. Well, add it. And so there's emotion behind the playlist because as a dancer, we also have our playlists that are like beats per minute and, you know, like, here's the ones that have the really good, you know, changes where we get to have big dips in it and all this kind of stuff. But to have that one playlist, that's like, this is our connection playlist. These are the songs that remind us of good times together or memories of, you know, really intimate moments. Or they just remind us of how much we love one another. Like when he came into my life, he doesn't have children. I was a single mom. And there was a song he sent me in the beginning that you've probably heard this song, but it's, uh, When I Watch You Be A Mother. You know that song? And he sent it to me once and I like fully teared up and was like, oh my gosh, that's so sweet. That's what every single mom dreams of, right? So that's on our playlist because it's meaningful for him. It's meaningful for me. We're probably never gonna hear it in the dance hall, but like when we dance to it, it helps us match each other's energy, connect with each other and feel that chemistry, that connection between one another.
I love that. That is really great advice. So what advice would you have for maybe couples who have been dancing a while and then do meet each other in that scene?
Yeah, so this is how we met. And, um, I think that I was actually quite intimidated by Tyler's dancing. I could not follow him for anything. In the beginning, he was so hard to follow for me. And I hear this from people a lot, like, I don't know how you follow him. He's so hard to follow. But, you know, when we came together, I think that there was a softening on both of our ends of like, I need to soften to learn how he leads. And he also needed to kind of slow down and see how I follow. And so instead of going out there and trying to show off and like, you know, do the biggest best moves to try to get the girl or get the guy, I would say if you really are looking at someone and you're like, I see that there's potential here and I want to know this person. Well, in real life, if you weren't dancing, you wouldn't go all buck wild trying to learn somebody because you'd probably scare him off, right? So I think that slowing down and giving yourself the opportunity to really learn that person on the dance floor, off the dance floor. That communication piece comes back in, that being an energetic match piece comes back in. And for me, in that chapter of my life, I was so focused and I still am. This is the work that I'm in as a feminine authenticity mentor. But like, not giving up my values, not giving up who I desire to express myself as. Like that queen self that's within me, really continuing to embody who you are so that they can meet you where you desire to be. That would be kind of the best explanation for both myself and my partner. What we both did when we came together already being in the dance scene, right?
Uh, that was amazing. So embody who you are so that they can meet you where you desire to be and to be met. That's incredible. So what would you say to someone who isn't necessarily sure how to embody that person that they desire to be?
Hmm, yeah. So little shameless plug here. I actually have a three day course. It's called embody your desires. It's self-paced. I would happily give you the, the link for that with a code so you can get it for half off for all of your listeners. And inside of that, this is what I work on with private mentorship clients and anybody who has that desire is you really have to know yourself. And you have to know who you are aside from what the world tells you to be, or who the world wants you to be, or who you think you should be in order to have that, uh, that feeling of enoughness, that feeling of being worthy, right? I mean, there's so much that we outsource our validity in the world from that it's oftentimes, I don't care who you are or what you're doing, your business and your community and your friendships and your relationships. We're always outsourcing that worthiness or that enoughness. But when we get down to the root of it and we really start asking ourselves who we really desire to show up as and what really lights us up in the world, then we get a sense of who we are. And so in the first part of embody your desires accelerator workshop, there's, I'll just give it to you here. There's a page where you go over what I call your fives. And your fives are looking at the five people you surround yourself with. The five points of information you take in the first, you know, hour you wake up, the five things you eat. You know, the five things you listen to, the five hobbies you do. And the five things you give your most attention to, the most energy to. And, you know, this, we go into kind of like your self-talk. What is your communication and your verbiage with yourself? How are you carrying yourself? And what people find is like, oh my gosh, are the five people I'm surrounding myself with people who are expanders for me or people who are helping me be a better person? Are they really lifting me up? Do they love me unconditionally? Or am I surrounding myself with people who are, you know, not happy in their lives or complaining all the time or gossiping all the time? And, you know, you go through all your fives and you start to shift them and you realize like, am I being who I desire to be and an embodiment of my highest version of myself? Or am I being somebody that is dimming my full potential? So yeah, there's so much. I mean, I could share so much about that. And that's really my work is to help people to embody their most authentic essence and have a reclamation and a restoration of their truest identity when they let everything that they're not melt away or everything that is not who they are dissolve so that they can radiate their truest expression.
That sounds so amazing. And it sounds really right in alignment with what I desire so much for the people, for myself, but also for the people who I imagine would come to this retreat that we're going to be talking more in detail about over the next few days, weeks and months. Exactly what you said, exactly what you said about embodying their desires and figuring out what, what is serving them, what is not serving them, how to shed what's not serving them so that they can have more space for what is serving them. Uh, yeah, I am so excited about everything you just said. And I absolutely appreciate the, the shameless plug. Keep those coming. And I'm excited to share that course with the listeners and would love to take it myself.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been, it's my bestselling offer and it simply is because I created it because I needed it. It's literally what helped me to step into full authenticity and feel so liberated in who I am and love myself. And, you know, that translates in everything that you do, dance, friendships, intimate relationships, the dating world, careers. I mean, your mothering, if you're a mom, I mean, knowing yourself changes the game.
Yeah, I can definitely see that to be true. And, um, you used a phrase. I think you said like borrowing from societies. Well, this is me, this is me like kind of not reframing, but rephrasing what you said. You said something about we like borrow truths from society versus living in our own. Can you say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, well, I think all over the world, there's so many, so many of us that were raised in seeking and outsourcing our ability to have approval from the world. And so, I mean, you could even look at this in the dance world. Like if you start to get into competition, right? It's like, we are looking for approval. Like, does this work? Is this okay? Can I do it like this? And that's beautiful if you are learning and you're giving yourself the opportunity to grow and learn. But at what cost are you giving up who you truly are for the approval of everyone else around you? And when we recognize, oh, I'm not doing this to feel good in myself. I'm doing this for the approval of someone else that doesn't land well in myself. I just need that approval or that, that worth or that sense of, this sense of confidence comes from someone else's approval. That's when we know we are outsourcing our happiness, really. If you look at it at a root level, it's like, you know, looking at all of the, the root things that we need as humans is like, we have to learn how to source those things from within and then express ourselves and magnetize the right people to us versus trying to draw people to us based on what their needs are, not our needs.
Ooh, can you say more about that?
Yeah, so.
Based on their needs versus our needs.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So our, this is all about embodying your desires. When you start to know yourself fully, I mean, so those of you who cannot see, I have a tattoo on my wrist. I've had it since I was eighteen and it's Latin and says, no se te ipsem. And it means know thyself, right? And when we get into what that really means, it's like when you know yourself fully, you can express yourself in the truth of who you are, right? And when we are really searching for what lights us up, what makes us feel alive, that is the base of how we become more magnetic. And then everything you desire, I mean, you can call it manifestation. I like to call it your magnetism. When you are really expressing yourself from the truth of who you are and you know yourself fully and you know what your desires are, you are literally turning up the dial on your magnetism. And your smile is for you. It radiates outward and it becomes your magnetism. The way you express yourself, the way you dance, the way you talk, the way you connect with people. You are, you are in your own magnetism that you don't have to try to reach or outsource because you draw the right people, the right opportunities, the right situations into your life. Because you become like a magnet to what is an energetic match for you. And then on the flip side of that, you will know without any doubt when something is not right for you. And inside of embody your desires, I'm just gonna give you everything here. We have this circle that we draw. You draw a circle and on the inside are the things that you want, you desire, feel good for you in your life. And on the outside are the things that don't. So you might have like debt or, you know, relationships that are not reciprocal or, you know, drama or gossip or, you know, dis-ease in the body or whatever. Those are on the outside. So what we do is we turn up the dial on the things on the inside. And then it gets really, really clear when something on the outside of that circle comes into our life. And it's so much easier to have boundaries and say no to something that's not in alignment. I mean, we've decided by way of getting clear on what our boundaries are personally and in our, our relationship, where we're gonna travel to, to go to different dance events and conventions and what's good for our, our, you know, relationship, ourselves and our mind, body, spirit and what's not. Because we've gotten so clear on who we desire to be and what we want in our lives.
I love that for you guys. And I love that for all the listeners who are going to be inspired by this. And I'll, I thank you for your generosity and sharing so much. It definitely makes me even more want to dig inside of your course, so.
I got you, girl.
So I'm sure the listeners will as well. Okay, so kind of, uh, maybe kind of tie it all in, wrap it up a little bit. What with this retreat? Cause, okay, so at the point of this recording, there has been on my heart, this deep desire to create a space for healing beyond just what kind of naturally occurs when we dance and when we express ourselves in that way, but bringing more attention to the embodiment and the mindset and and just that whole realm. And so there's been this desire in my heart because I love creating space for people to find healing. And that is why I started the dance events. It's what, it's what inspired the Edge Dance Event. From my, kind of came from my own healing journey and I am still on it, but I may have come so, so far. And so with every event, that, that is my main desire, my main intention. But I've had it on my heart more recently to do something more specifically oriented towards that type of healing or growth. So what, let's see. What do you imagine? And what do you, what would you intend for a dancer who came to this dance wellness retreat to kind of come away with?
Hmm, okay. So going back to the magnetism here, I just wanna share. This is a perfect example because Adia, I've known you through the dance community. And we haven't really had time to connect one-on-one like this. But when I saw you share what you're creating and wanting to bring mind, body, spirit and dance together, that is what magnetized me to you, like turned up the dial. Crazy to the point where I was like, we need to talk because this is like, this is how you magnetize your people. And the people who want what you have to offer is exactly what this woman just did. And so perfect example here, right? And for me, one of the things that has really kind of closed me off from wanting to go to a lot of dance conventions is how exhausted we are leaving them. And how I see people staying up all night long till all hours of the morning. And they're just rushing, rushing, they're stuffing their face with food, just trying to eat in between classes. And they're not slowing down to allow things to integrate. I might be pulling back the curtain here a little bit on like, why a lot of the dance community wants these events to change, right? But like, it's exhausting mentally, physically, emotionally, spiritually. When there is not this piece of, yeah, integration or having this time to process what we're learning and let it be a full body somatic experience to go and learn dance, learn styling, learn whatever it is that's there. And so I may have liked gotten off on your question here. But I think that when I hear that there's going to be this event, I am all in. And, you know, all out as is here for it because I think that this is what dancers are craving. Letting this be more of a, for lack of a better term, like a spiritual experience so that dance can be healing and not just something that drains your adrenals. And you keep going back for more. Let it be the thing that nourishes you.
Oh my goodness. Well, I'm so excited and so thankful for this conversation. Today, we have our first brainstorm for the retreat. And I feel like this was really the perfect like pre-conversation even that I needed going into it. Because all I know is how I want people to feel. And I believe you're totally right in saying that I magnetized like the right people into this space. Cause I'm so impressed, first of all, by the people who are in this, who are in the space and who I did like kind of add to this brainstorm idea. Cause I'm like, you know, I don't, I know what I want it to feel like, but I'm not exactly sure how to make that happen. And I'm not exactly sure what else is needed to really best serve the people. So in their needs. And it's gonna be, and just even hearing that that's like a need that you see already, like people come. They come for, I think so many right reasons. But then, like you said, maybe leave more drained than, um, than totally like filled. It's like their heart, there, there's something about it that does fill their soul for sure. It's like their heart, there, there's something about it that does fill their soul for sure. But then it's like, okay, now what? And that integration, I believe, is what is, is missing. And, um, one of the things I did a little differently and I really loved it. And I think this might be in alignment with what you're talking about. Is for the Edge Fall Fest in 2023, I had hour sets with half hour breaks in between. And the half hour breaks were just supposed to be just chill, just like relax, enjoy. You know, get, have time to eat, have time to converse with people, have time to let whatever it is settle in. Um, we also didn't do any competitions at that event. It was, it was purely just learn and enjoy, relax. And I don't even like, I knew somehow, like intuitively, this is what was needed, but I don't think I could have even put words exactly behind it. I'm just like, this is what I feel we need and this is how I know to do it. And with this retreat, I feel like this is what I feel we need and I don't exactly know how to do it. So I'm going to, I'm going to put it out there and see who is also moved by this idea and who might be able to help me create something like this.
Hmm. Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah. And I have a background of leading retreats as a yoga instructor and I play crystal bowls around Colorado often. And so the art of holding space is so important. And I love that you're going to take the art of holding space in a sacred way and bring that together and marry that with dance. So that, yeah, because we are all already know that dance is such a soulful thing. Whether you are dancing until three in the morning or, you know, whatever it looks like for you. But how nourishing would it be to know that you could come somewhere and it would be like a retreat for mind, body, spirit and dance, right? That's what I'm here for. So.
Yeah. Oh my gosh. Well, I'm so excited. I can't wait to talk to you more about all this. So, um, as we kind of come to a close, Elise, where can we find you? Where can we find?
Thank you. So the best place to find me is on Instagram and my Instagram is Elise Nicole. And please, if you do come say hi, follow me, tell me that you found me from this recording so that I kind of know where to place, you know, where people are coming from. I love making friends. So chances are if you say hi, I'm going to be like, tell me about yourself, because I love actually meeting people. My website is my full name. It's elisenickelkirkpatrick.com. When you land on my website, here's the little secret. So at the top of the page, whether you are a woman or a man, it doesn't matter. I have, it's called the worthy woman visualization meditation. And if you're a dude and you want to listen to it, just do your best to replace any word that I use to describe it as a woman, as a man. Basically what you'll hear is you'll replace the word queen with king and that's it. But when you do put your email in to receive that free meditation, that's where you'll get embody your desires at 50% off. So that's where the secret is. You get both that meditation and embody your desires. And yeah, other than that, you can peruse my beautiful website that I'm so proud of and just come say hi on Instagram.
Yes. Oh my goodness. I'm so excited to go and see your beautiful website and I'm loving your confidence about it as well, because I know that's part of that growth, that's part of that, that, um, yeah, just that journey to loving yourself and being so authentically you.
Hmm. Thank you. Yeah. I mean, the way that I feel now because of my journey, I want everybody to feel this way. I want everybody to radiate unapologetically and be in their magnetism. So I'm all about it.
Yeah, me too. All right, Elise. Well, thank you so much. And we look forward to hearing more from you. I look forward to chatting with you more and I'm so excited for everyone to hear this episode.
Awesome. Thank you, sister.